Sorry, I had to get them paired. Okay, this is a public meeting. I want to be able to hear. I'd like to call it the Springfield Local Board of Education Regular Meeting for Tuesday, May 20, 2025. Call it to order. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Mrs. Frola?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Furlong?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Okay, all present, would you rise for this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start off with happy news. So, Mrs. Warner?
Yes.
Give us some happy news.
The whole meeting's gonna be happy news.
Well, I think anytime we just...
Kids, it's happy news. Don't let that levy get to you.
I have Students of the Month, and the Students of the Month at Springfield High School in Junior High are determined by our National Honor Society students. They get all of the nominations from the teachers with the student's name removed, and they read them, and then they decide and vote who they want to choose to be the recipient. So, we're gonna start with high school first. Could I have Emma Berlin come join me at the podium, please? Yes, come beside me. Emma's the recipient for the high school, and this is what her teacher wrote for her. Emma has wonderful manners and a great personality. Her academic work is exemplary. Emma's effort, attention, and attitude are top-notch, and she was nominated by Mr. Harton. So, this certificate was printed and is at the entrance of the building. It will then be moved down by our community center and will stay there until the following May when it's replaced by our next student. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And A.J. McKenzie, will you join me up here, please?
She's our junior high student, and this is what was written about her. I would like to nominate Addie A.J. McKenzie for recognition. She does an outstanding job leading the seventh-grade band's percussion section with focus and determination, truly shining in the band room. I also admire her dedication to the girls' wrestling team. She balances school and sports exceptionally well while leading by example in band, and she was nominated by Mrs. Fraley. Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you to both of the students, and congratulations.
We have Portage Lakes?
I was gonna say Portage Lakes. Who is doing Portage Lakes?
Hi, guys.
Who's doing this? Donnie?
Oh, somebody left the purse.
Are you doing Portage?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
For last month, the Student of the Month for Portage Lakes Career Center was Sophia Walberg. I know her as Sophie, a member of the cross-country team and doing really well. She is a proud representative for the very first doctoral program that they have. And then Sam Cole, Top 25 student graduating this year and graduating Top Honors. And her teacher talked very highly about her during the Top 25 dinner. It was amazing.
Yeah, you did, yes. All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now Springfield High School in Junior High Art Presentation.
I didn't have a whole lot prepared to talk about today, but we had a really great year at the art department. Kelly Weiss and myself collaborated quite a bit this year, and we're showing the junior high first, so this is Sophie's Bud's artwork with the junior high kids. And she is having a little show tomorrow from, was it five to eight tomorrow?
Five thirty at five, sorry.
Five thirty, okay. I know she did some still-life work with her kids and some portraiture. She had some of the safety kids poster contest winners, too. So, we look forward to having these kids in the high school next year. And then the other one? Did you get the other one?
Yep. You just gotta switch it over to it.
Okay. All right, this starts out with Kelly's, Kelly Weiss's artwork, and I'm just so impressed with the work the kids did this year in her class. It's just beautiful. She told me just today what a great year she had, and very sad that she's retiring, but I'm happy for her. These are acrylic paintings. You can see the work with the reflection. These were portraits.
And that's one of the chwabba lights and shine the light on other faces of ours.
She got a special lamp to get the colors on there. And that is Zion's acrylic painting. Charcoal drawing. They take these pictures in class, so even the pop cans and the chips are all taken in class, the glasses pictures are taken in class. These aren't, of course, but those look like watercolors and color pencil. Back to acrylic paintings. It's about reflection. Color pencil again. There's Alejandro on the left there. And that's Kaylee Boggs. She is, that was a color pencil, I think this one's pencil. More charcoal. Those are really fun to do. The kids love to do the ice cream. They're not so keen on doing portraits, but once they finish them, they're always glad they did it. Color pencil. These are getting into tempera paint. These are multimedia pieces, ink and paint. That's pencil drawing. All the, these portraits are pencil drawings. That's scratch art. This is an Art One project. They have to mix all those colors. Those are beautiful. That's, that's scratch art also.
Wow.
You get so much texture that way. This one, just beautiful piece. And that's tempera paint. Can you guys believe that? It's tempera. More pencil portraits.
What's that?
That's acrylic.
So, this is...
This is Alejandro. He's, this is, he got first place and Best of Show at the Holocaust Contest this year. Kaylee Boggs got, I'm, I'm not sure what, did she get an honorable mention? Yeah. She is only in 10th grade. We get to have her for two more years. I'm just excited about the work she's gonna do, but this is his Best of Show, the piece that he made.
Is that pencil?
It is pencil, and no, he went in with ink and watercolor, too. It's multimedia, and then some collage at the very top of that. The piece that he did last year also did really well. It got second place. And, oh yeah, there it is, honorable mention. You're right. You're, you'll see a lot more good things from Kaylee, too.
She had an honorable mention on...
Yeah. Adriana Collins, honorable mention.
Okay, now, what was this?
Now, this was the Congressional Art Show, and Liliana Biedinger got third place, and she's 11th grade, so we get to keep her again for another year. Excited about that. And that's Liliana. And then that was at the, the comp, no, that wasn't at the competition. He wouldn't have been there. That was at the, I'm sorry. They did a contest for the importance of jury duty, and they both won an award for that. Now, Ms. Weiss and myself, we've been working with Alejandro to build a portfolio for him to go to art school, and we're working with several other students, too. And if you see, Alejandro was awarded a college scholarship of $98,000 for the Columbus College of Arts and Design. So, he is so excited to go to art school, and he won't be too far from home. And then the next part is what we did in the 3D classroom with ceramics and sculpture. I put quite a few pictures of the kids, 'cause I like to show them working and showing off their artwork. Few of our seniors, Jesse Stevens and Zion. This is one of their first projects they do. It's coiled-built vases. We do pop can monsters. They love to do that. They're so fun. And then they're learning to, oh, we do all-hand building, except for this year I brought my wheel in for the kids to try, so they got a chance to try that this year. They transform furniture inspired by favorite artists. Here's a couple of the kids working. And then we did paper lanterns this year with reed and tissue paper. Those are ceramic rooms, mini rooms that they do. It's so fun. We did beaded trees this year in the advanced class. We did large candy, too. Sea creatures. We did ramen bowls, and we had a ramen party. And the kids loved doing this project. This was new this year for cake sculptures, and we did it out of cardboard and air-dry clay. It was so fun. And then we set up a sweet shop. And then the final project for ceramics, too, they had to do teapots and teapot sets, actually. So, they had to make cups or saucers, whatever they wanted to make with it. And that was it.
Thank you. Do you think we would be able to keep, put that on our website so people can see it?
Oh, I would love that.
Okay. All right, so people, you know, if they wanna go slower through them and really, whoa, hello. Well, again, hello. And really take, to really be able to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Then I think that's what we're gonna do.
Thank you for doing this.
No, you know what? Thank you, and, and you know, one of the things that we talked about when the levy was about how important arts are, and we have amazing artists in our school.
We do.
When you walk into the, the rotunda and you see the artwork there, it's just amazing. So, thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say, this is what I mentioned last, the, I went down to the library and I saw the Holocaust music exhibit, and in addition to us admiring it and me being so proud, it was kind of neat. I stood back a little while and listened to the people that were around looking at the things, and they mentioned, they, you know, they were admiring and complimenting the work that the students can do, and made me proud, so. Board members informal. Do I have someone who wants to start? I, I don't wanna jump in, but...
I'll go real quick. Probably too many to list right now, being the end of the school year, but another successful year for the teachers and students and administration staff. It's been really good. Washington trip, they just got back from there. I've heard a lot of success stories from there, where my daughter actually tells me something she learned. That's pretty good. Prom is Friday, and senior walk was really cool yesterday. I wasn't there, but they were sending me pictures, and then I found out my wife was there, so I was like, oh, jeez. But, and thanks to everyone who did the scholarships and stuff, that was really cool to see how many were out there.
I just wanna thank the community for showing up on Election Day. I think that was one of the most emotional days that I've had, and I'm not an emotional person. I was hugging people, so that doesn't happen. Tears and cheers, but I think that people really rallied around the importance of not just the education factor, but the arts and the music and growing, keeping everything moving forward. So, I know that a lot of people were very happy, and I think the message got out, so thank you very much.
I'm gonna piggyback on that and say, even though we tried to send letters to, or well, we attempted to cover everyone, but letters were, thank you, were sent to each of the people who signed up to volunteer, but on a Saturday morning, it was kind of rainy, and I thought, ooh, I hope they come to pick up their cards when we were doing the distribution, and within an hour, I was down to, like, there was one, one set left, and then I realized that someone had signed up to take two. And I just, you know, having done levies in the past and knowing that by the time we get to the end of the levy, people have done so much that it's just like, I'm tired. But I, I wanna say thank you for, even if you were tired, not acting tired and coming out and doing it, and it, it just was a real team effort, and it was amazing to see.
I also agree. It's so, so important that we got those passed, and I'm just glad that we did, so we can see, as Miranda said, a future where we keep growing off what we've already accomplished and the things that we seek to accomplish in the next few years, to really climb as a district and to be competitive with the other districts around us and to hopefully leave them in the dust at some point and be one of the best districts in Allson County. That's one of my goals, and that's what I wanna see one day, so.
And I'll finish off by thanking the community for the levies and renewals. When you see artwork like that, we have always said for years that our kids are very artistic in this district, and that's not in my bucket list, but I am in awe of some of that, how they draw, that just, I love looking at it. So, thank you very much. Last Friday, we had an interesting meeting here at the board office. We had reps, Ohio reps out of the Ohio House, Reps 32, Jack Daniels, this is our rep, our home rep, and then Rep. 65, David Thomas out of Andover, majority of Ashtabula County, who's been a few following this, has been, been pushing a lot of the things and levies and how those affect the 20-mill floor. We had a very, very good conversation here. They both came in, and I was sort of, you know, we had planned that we would talk for a little bit, and then we'd go visit the school, so I mentioned it, and Mr. Thomas looks at me and goes, we're having a really good conversation. I think we'll stay here. So, I thought I'd try one more time, and Jack Daniels looked at me and goes, these are very good conversations. We'll just stay here. And I went, I got the message. So, a lively conversation. One of, at least my key peak points, and Shelley and administrative team tag in after, after I, I have always wanted to say, look at our valuations, you know, their, their point was, every school got money in the state of Ohio after they went back and looked at it after it was in the house. And I said, well, we don't, we're not even keeping up with inflation, and it's been that way for 13 years, and this is what our valuation is, and this is what we're getting, and that's not correct for us. And that's, that's my beef with how we've been treated. But it was, it was lively conversation. They were very open to what we had to say. We listened to them and relayed into the rest of that, because all of you sat in that. Donnie Furlong sat in for a little bit. Chris, you sat in. Shelley?
It was a, it was a very, you know, what we just asked them to do is just look at each district individually. Don't clump us in with everybody else, because we are so different than a lot, and I didn't, I think we taught them some things. I really do. I mean, there was some, you know, aha moments that came out of them that, that, you know, they said they had done like 77 of these. Is that what they said?
Dave Thomas said this was his 72nd school visit.
Right. And I, I'm gonna say ours was probably the most organic that was there, because we really didn't have a set script. It was just whatever came to our heads, we said out loud, and I think shocked them a little bit that our brains worked like that, but, and we agreed to disagree on some things, so it was a, it was good, but I, I think they, I think they, I think they enjoyed it just as much as we did.
I think because we were genuine, and it came from the heart.
Right.
It just wasn't, we just didn't throw them with a bunch of figures.
Right.
We actually had discussion.
Right.
Does anybody else wanna chime in?
Thank you for making the effort to make school come alive in their minds.
Yes, so, you know, thanks, Dave, for getting them in.
It is so abstract sometimes.
And it is.
Thank you.
And it is.
Okay. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 15, 2025, as provided in Exhibit 1.
So, move.
It moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Motion pass. Number nine, we are open for any citizens' comments on agenda items. Any citizens' comments? All right, seeing none, then we'll go to number 10. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of April pending audit, and that's, those are provided in Exhibits 2.
So moved, second.
And then moved in second without questions, then Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for the April 2025, as provided in Exhibits 3, 4, and 5.
So moved. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Okay, it is, motion pass. Moving to personnel, it is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 12.1 Retirement Resignations. Accept the resignation of the following certified staff members. Lori Begunovich, effective June 1, 2025. Jennifer Ganser, effective September 1, 2025. Kelly Harmon Weiss, effective June 1. Ed Lancer, effective June 1. And Wendy Liebman, effective June 1.
I'll go through it all, and I'll go through.
Okay. Moving to 12.2, accept the retirement resignation of classified employee Teresa Henthorne, effective July 1, 2025. 12.3, approve a two-year administrative contract for Tim Burns as Schrop Intermediate Principal. Effect, 12.4, approve a three-year administrative contract for Todd Lovell as Springfield High School and Junior High Assistant Principal. 12.5, approve a three-year administrative contract for Kevin Vaughn as Dean of Students and Athletic Director. 12.6, exempted employee contract. Approve a three-year exempted employee contract for Melinda Hamilton for transportation of supervisor. 12.7, employ Stacy Manzo as a Springfield High and Junior High Assistant Principal on a two-year administrative contract pending proper licensure effective for the 25-26 school year. 12.8, employ Shelby Van Guten as a Springfield High School and Junior High Assistant Principal on a two-year administrative contract pending proper licensure effective the 25-26 school year. 12.9, employ Brooke Badwe, I hope I said that right, but, as a 100% elementary teacher per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective the 25-26 school year. 12.10, employ Gregory Van Lally as a 100% teacher per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective for the 25-26 school year. 12.11, reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. And these are reassignments from, well, I'll read them. Samantha Baker, seven-hour teaching assistant. Betty, Betty Beatty Salzwager, four-hour bus driver. Joe Eppner, a four-hour standby bus drive monitor. Tara Pritchard, seven-and-a-half-hour study hall educational assistant at the Springfield High School Junior High. And that one is effective, these are all effective at different employment dates. Rebecca Biedinger, 6.75-hour teaching assistant at the Springfield Preschool. Michelle Nagel, head building secretary at Springfield High School and Junior High, effective the 25-26 school year, with training to begin at, on March, May 12. And Tatiana Radnovich, head secretary at the Springfield Elementary School, effective the 25-26 school year. 12.12, employ Stan Cooper as a substitute, a classified substitute, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, effective the first day assigned. 12.3, employment. Employ Holly Murphy as a classified two-hour educational assistant at Schrop Intermediate per the negotiated agreement, and that would be effective May 20. 12.14, summer school credit recovery program. Approve Steve Schaefer as an online summer school credit recovery teacher for grades nine through 12 for the summer of 2025 at the approved grade of 28.25 per hour. This position is an online position with a maximum two hours per day for 27 days for the total maximum hours of 20, 54 hours. for 27 days for the total maximum hours of 20, 54 hours. 12.15. Resident Educator Mentors or Facilitators. And approve them, the teachers approved to serve in in that position pending proper licensure and complete completion of required training on an as-needed basis. Claire Miller, Julie Di Tomaso, Dina Screamo, Paula Murphy, and Brett Zimmerman. 12.16. ESY Teachers. And they are, the following teachers are employed as certified personnel to work during the extended school year summer 2025 pending sufficient student enrollment. And their pay is $28.25 for a maximum of up to 64 hours. And those are listed as Melanie Smithers, James Burns, Rodney Bowen, Sydney Kenneth, Mary Beth Mitchell, Sheila Wright as a substitute, and Katie Dacus as a speech psychologist. 12.17. ESY Aides. Employ the following for the extended year program pending proper student enrollment and up to a maximum of 56 hours. That would be Tina Merkel, Regina Southall, Nancy Arons, Rachel Powell, Tracy Cole. 12.18. Athletic Supplemental Contracts. And the these are listed, and it's a rather long list, but these are all the athletic contracts for the fall sports. And these are assigned per the negotiated agreement. And that's it. That's a lot of hours.
So moved. Second.
Did I do everyone?
Yes. Okay, a couple things. Let's go with some of the retirements that we have. Lori Begunovich. Lori started her career in Springfield in the 1992, 93 school year as a first-grade teacher at Roosevelt, where she also taught third grade. She then taught first grade at Lakemore and then kindergarten at Boyer. And then for the 2010, 2011 school year, she moved to Schrop to teach fourth grade. Is now finishing her career teaching fifth grade. Jen Ganzer. Jenny started, actually kindergarten here. She went to school here. But the 94, 95 school year teaching kindergarten at Boyer before moving to Young. And the 96, 97 school year to teach first grade. She began her administrative career in 2003 as an assistant principal at Schrop. Since then, she's also served as assistant principal at Spring Hill, principal at Boyer, Young, and Spring Hill where she's finishing her career. Kelly Harmon Weiss, who we just saw a lot of the artwork. It's going to be, you know, their kids are, but they've got really good teachers to get that artistic out of them. Beginning in the 93, 94 school year, Kelly was employed as an art teacher at Lakemore Elementary. She also taught art at Sawyerwood, Schrop, Springfield, Young, and Roosevelt. And she's finishing her career teaching at the high school junior high. Ed Lancer. Ed began teaching Springfield in the 94, 95. It was a really busy year between 94 and 97. By teaching seventh grade language arts. He also taught seventh grade math at Spring Hill before switching to physical education. He taught PE at Spring Hill, Spring Hill High School and Junior High, and at Schrop where he's finishing his career. Wendy Liebman began her career in 92, 93 at Lakemore and Young. She spent one year teaching first grade and the rest of her career teaching second grade mostly at Young and then finishing up at Spring Hill. As you know, the state changed retirement from 33 years down to 32 years in like a month. And unfortunately, fortunately for them, they were able to come in at the last minute to do that. Teresa Hethorn, who will be retiring as the head secretary of Spring Hill. Teresa started at Springfield in the 94, 95 school year as a monitor at Young. She then held many positions either as a monitor or teaching assistant at Young, Spring Hill, Schrop, and the high school junior high before becoming the building secretary for the 18, 19 school year. She's been a secretary at the high school, junior high, Young, Spring Hill, where she's finishing her career. So those are our goodbyes. Coming in, we've got Tim Burns here who is going to be our new, you could stand, Tim, if you want. There you go, who is going to be our new Schrop principal. We're excited. We've got Todd here. So Todd, thanks for coming back. We appreciate it. Amazing. Let's see, where am I? We've got Kevin. Kevin is needless to say is at the softball game where they're losing nine to one. I did guess what he said. Yeah, nine to one. So it's the top of the seven. So that's where Kevin's at. So three-year for athletic. We got Melinda, who, three-year. Back home. She, she is amazing. You know, I mean, it's it's, we say a kid's name and she knows exactly where they live, how many people live in the house, you know, when they bought the house, when they take their garbage out. I mean, she's got it all. She's got it all. So so thank you. Then we have Stacy Manzo, who is going to be now one of the newest assistant principals at the high school. Stacy was a teacher and a special ed teacher. And she's going to be a really great addition. We have Shelby Van Guten, who's also going to be one of our assistant principals. Needless to say, they've gone through, they went through several rounds of interviews. And they constantly just kept everybody that they interviewed with. They just rose to the occasion. So welcome over to the I'd say to the dark side, but it's it's our side. Thank you. Brooke Badaway is going to be our kindergarten teacher. So she's now doing.
She's doing the long-term kindergarten for Rayland Craig right now as Rayland's moving towards retirement and she's out on medical. So Brooke is filling in and Brooke will just take over that classroom.
Okay, awesome. And then Ben is back there. We talked about a while ago as our head football coach, but Ben is finishing up to get his degree and he will be joining us at the high school junior high more than likely as taking Mr. Murphy's place, which is going to be big shoes to fill with CBI. I mean, really big shoes.
Literally and factually.
Yeah, it's shoes to fill. But we've got some ideas of where Christina's, you know, always thinking of of new ideas and where to go and take us right to the brink of exciting things. So I don't know what Ben's, I don't know if he realizes what he's in for, but he's in for some. So we're excited about that. In the reassignments, Michelle Nagel is, and last month we did take Mary Sayer's retirement. So Michelle Nagel is going to be taking her spot. So she's been up there now working, just learning the ropes because the end of this school year in a high school is just busy, 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 busy. So she's getting on that. And then Tatiana, who was working as the aide, the office aide at Spring Hill, is going to be moving up to the secretarial position there. So, I mean, you're talking within two years. We've got four new secretaries. We've got, out of our six administrators, seven administrators, six, one, two, three, four, five, six administrators. Four of them are going to be brand spanking new into the positions. So there's a lot of changes, a lot of changes going on. We got Steve Schaefer. So we know that the summer school credit recovery, we're thankful for Steve for stepping up on that one. This is for our kids who are struggling that did not take, that didn't do so well in their classes. So they're going to get a second chance to do it over the summertime to make sure that we keep them on track for graduating. The resident educator mentors, by law, when we get new teachers in, they are assigned either a mentor or facilitator depending upon where they're at. So these teachers are, and they have to go through special training. So these teachers will be those mentors or facilitators. The ESY teachers and ESY aides. ESY is extended school year and it is for our students with.
They either have show significant regression throughout the school year or need to have extra time during the school year so they don't lose some of the skills that they've had.
So, you know, we thank these teachers for giving up their, not giving up their summer, but working with our kids during the summer. Then we have the athletic. So we saw them. You know, what was exciting about this list is we've got some new people that are stepping up to being coaches that haven't coached for a while. So we're excited about that. I know Coach Lally over there has got a football over here that's, him and Kevin have just been working on. So that was good. I'm really excited about our sports here. So I think we're going to just, it's going to be a good fall season. And that's it. So it's it's a lot. It's a lot. It's exciting. It's it's our kids deserve it.
Well, we better formally hire them then.
Yeah, I think we better formally hire them.
Emotion?
It's good motion.
You already had a motion second.
Okay.
Mrs. Frall.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Motion approved and everyone is hired.
Congratulations, guys. Now that you're here, you can't, you can't leave. You got to stay. So you're not going to get up and leave. Sorry, Todd. I saw you. I saw you look over. I saw you looked over at Tim there. No, no.
Well, number 13, approval of graduates. It is recommended that the board approve the 2025 seniors listed in exhibit six to receive a diploma from Springfield High School after having met all the requirements as set forth by the state of Ohio and the Springfield Board of Education.
That one's made. So moved.
Okay. And again, you know, when I said that this is a good meeting, this is a great meeting. We got a lot of good things. This is exciting. This is the approval for the graduates. It's going to be next Friday. Hopefully, everybody will be able to make it. I don't know if you've got to tell you if they're coming to get tickets. Okay, so let Mrs. Warner know. Yeah, you can give them to me.
Yeah, just send them over and we'll wrestle for them.
Yes, yeah. Okay, we're not wrestling. We're not, we're not going to be doing any jello wrestling.
We have a team now.
We're not doing any jello wrestling. Yes, okay. No, we're not. Ben, you want to coach some jello wrestling? I don't know. Maybe it's a but to Donnie's, you know what, the the award ceremony yesterday was fantastic. Our kids were great. There was a lot of scholarship money given away.
Oh, my.
You know, the high school always does a great job with it. Matt Graves and Alana Jackson really worked hard. And then watching the kids come through the halls, that that's always a a great. Did we just start doing it? We just started doing that a couple of years ago. Okay, so that's, you know, something that that's really good. So prove the graduates.
Okay, we have a motion.
It's been done for a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mrs. Frall.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Woo-hoo!
And I'm sure all the graduates have too.
Yes. Yes.
All right. It is recommended, service agreement. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with the educational alternatives to provide educational services to students on an as-needed basis for the 2526 school year. And that agreement is in exhibit seven.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, this is, of course, our service agreement with EA that's over at Young. And it's 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 to provide services for students as an as-needed basis for.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Frall.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, our next item, number 15, is a resolution rescinding a prior resolution and authorizing the selection of a contract through the Ohio School, Ohio Council of Educational Purchasing Consortium. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution rescinding a prior resolution and authorizing selection of a contract through the Ohio Council of Educational Purchasing Consortium for its roofing project.
You have a motion in a second.
Oh.
Motion second.
Okay, this is all Dustin. Go for it.
Excuse me. So the resolution that we're rescinding was a previous contract, I believe, from October where we awarded a roofing contract for the replacement of part of the roof in this building down this hall area. There was a smaller section. Since we had awarded that contract, we've continued to have further deterioration of the roof that's caused problems that you can see walking through the hallways here and so on. So we went back out to go through the process of getting pricing for not only a larger portion of this building, the majority of this building except for the roof section here, but also included, or the gym section here, roof. Also included the gym section at Spring Hill because of ongoing problems there. There's not saying that these are the only problems that we face, but they've been the most most severe and most ongoing issues. Other areas are need to be in our plan in the next few years here to fix or replace there. But these were the most urgent issues there. So we went through a consortium bid process there. It's nationally recognized and vetted there and received bids there. We went back. We originally received bids for the project separately. And they came in very close there. But we, in talking to the contractor, realized that we could save some additional money by combining the projects into one award. So we went back and rebid the project then combining them into one single project there. So we were able to to do that, realize some savings by by doing that. Funding for this will all come from our permanent improvement budget, which is dedicated to the upkeep and maintenance of the the buildings here. Can't be used for other purposes. So that will all be funded through through that fund there. And the work will be completed this summer. They have a strict deadline in the contract of August 15 to complete the work by so that, and there are, there is a fine in there for every day that they would go over if they would exceed that. So our coordination up to this point, which we could do, you know, prior to approval of the contract here, but they plan to get started very early in June there to get get the work done and out of the way there. So that there's no problems with that deadline. And they they work extensively with schools. So very familiar with those timelines. Any questions?
Just a quick glance. It's like $70,000 in savings.
Yeah.
Combined. Okay.
Any other questions before we go?
We got one more thing.
If I can go ahead and give my update here, I want to update something that's connected to this project here. I have a proposal in front of you with the, in the blue folder. There are nothing that needs to be voted on, but just wanted to present to you this evening of establishing a district facilities and capital planning committee. This would be a 10-member committee representing our employee groups, parent representatives, community members, and representatives from Springfield Township and the village of Lakemore to come together and review our facility needs, our permanent improvement budget, and make recommendations for future projects there in what order and how we proceed. We have a a great deal of things that need attention and want to have that transparency out there of what's going on, what our issues are with facilities and projects and get their input on those. They would make recommendations to the superintendent and to make to the board there based on what they find out. And not only have that as a committee to make those recommendations, but just also get a a greater understanding of our our needs and current situation out in the community.
So along with the, you know, with the roof, like how we did it, but just to make sure that we have a committee now. sure that we have a committee now to really look at everything that we have going on in the district to make the decisions.
I fully agree.
That's one idea.
Great idea.
Let's vote on the motion.
So the roof?
Yep. For the roof.
No, the roof.
The roof.
The roof.
We're not voting on that.
Very good, a motion and a second.
We got him.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Purlong.
Yes.
Mrs. Farol.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Motion passed. All right, next we have the treasurer's report.
I think last month, I know last month I talked about, there was two forecasts that I was gonna be able to present, the good one and the bad one. Well, I'm here to present the good one, which is wonderful. In my 15 years here, outside of the building project that happened right when I got here, this is a, I think everybody can state that the results, the percentages was, I don't believe I've ever seen a lovey so, two loveys so high, 67 and 68 percent. That gives you a good feeling that the community really stood behind us, and it made a major impact to our forecast, and I want to focus on a couple lines. Now, this forecast, I want you to let you know, will change four years in. And the reason it's gonna change is because we're getting a ton of people retiring. Typical year is 35, we're in a lot more now, reassign people, and what we have to do in a forecast is we've gotta see, one, the sufferance package for each one of these individuals, two, old salary versus new salary, three, old benefits versus new benefits. We, if a thing when a person comes into the district together and they may be single, they may be whatever, where most of our teachers, when they retire, they're the ones that help me insurance money because we have such a nice plan, so there's a lot of big things to do, so, but either way, this forecast is great. Let's focus on two lines that really changed, okay? The two lines that changed, this line 1.01, these reflect the two renewals that were passed. Those two renewals brought in $4 million. So you can see how much that would impact the forecast. That's a good thing. There's gonna be a rough thing though, right here. Benefits are gonna bite next year. When I say that, they're going up 17 percent. And the reason they're going up 17 percent is we have a lot of events that were caused, you know, it's just what happened. We had, we just had a lot of events. We had, we lost a employee that I truly admired, we had a couple of spots that passed, and that's just tragic stuff. And what that does is it just, you know, you know my bill, this is ridiculous, I've seen my bill bills that it just outrages turd like two days. Well, that's gonna change next year, obviously. Take me for example, I'm a lot cheaper when I was 23 than when I was 5, I think we all are, much less than plus. That's how, that's how the benefits work. So that will invariably go down, which would help. Go down a little bit farther Dustin, down to where we stand, okay? Where we go. Cast bounds, we'll end this year in the 6-8 range, next year 7-1, 27, 5-8, 28, 3, 29, negative 7-30. But, go down a little farther, oh, we'll just keep it at that. We haven't seen numbers like that in a long time. Gives us a lot of breathing room. And again, I think with the forecast that I'm gonna produce in July, will be even better. Let's go to one note though, you know, revenues, we talk about revenues, we've been talking about the loveys, how important the loveys are, and they are. Unfortunately, on the expenditure side, I think I made a very simple graphic, which goes to show how difficult it is for us to really have a huge impact on expenditures. And people say, why is that? Well, it's right here. That right here is people. Can't get rid of, you know, we already got rid of all the people we can get rid of, right? We're very relative right now. But our revenue is 80 percent of our total spent, and if our healthcare continues to rise, or we have a bad year like we had this year, that number is even gonna go over a little more. So really, what we can concentrate out of a $26 million budget is the $5 million. The rest are, you know, right here. We're in the hands of the insurance companies, and, and our people is, you know, it's, we have contracts, and like I said earlier, we don't have room to cut anymore, so. So I was really relieved that these two were real fast, and it's nice to have breathing room, and I'm very happy for our kids, and I'm very happy for our staff, and our board, and the community. It was a resounding yes, and I think it surprised a lot of people, which was nice. Because it shows that when you run a, an effect, an effective and an open campaign, that people, they respond to it. Any questions on forecast? Perfect, thanks.
Okay, central office.
Don't we have to vote on the five-year forecast?
Yes.
Oh.
Let me get my glasses.
It is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast update, and these are Exhibits 9 and 9A.
She's moved second.
It moved in second, Mr. Adams?
I didn't, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Hofer and-
Dave and Wilson.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Purlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Farol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is that your treasurer's report also?
That is, that is.
Okay, central office then.
So, one of the things that I do as the Director of Academics and Human Resources is I go through all the applications that do come into the district, and people often ask, why do you want to come to Springfield? And, and sometimes you hear people say, you know, people don't really wanna go there. I am here to tell you that's wrong. In the particular case of our assistant principals at the high school, we had 32 external applicants. For the elementary principal position that we are working on filling for Mrs. Ganser when she retires, we've had 23 external applicants. That's not even counting our internal people, so we do have that. Right now, we have elementary teaching positions open and posted, and the posting's not even halfway through, and we have 25 applications for just that right now. We've got applications that are crazy in numbers that we usually don't see, which is fantastic, more so fantastic for the people who get to retire, because those people get to start the next chapter of their lives, but it also allows new people to come into our district and start the first chapter of their, let's call it adult life, so that they can come here and enjoy a career. So it's very exciting to be in Human Resources right now.
I should've gone first because Mary's was way more exciting. So, in March, we switched our IEP writing software over to a new program. The program that we've been using is going to become outdated and discontinued in the next year and a half. So we switched early and has been fun to work with some of the teachers that have adopted the new program and are working through the, you know, hiccups and getting to learn something new, but it will be in the long run much easier and much more user-friendly, so we're excited. And it will catch errors if teachers, they don't always catch the errors until after it gets sent to us, so now they will be able to catch it on their own, and it will be better for funding and better for compliance, so.
And I have to just thank, they've been, Mary has been, let's see, assistant principals, principals, gym teachers, our PE teachers, art teachers, elementary teachers, so her whole life right now is interviewing.
And I'll be posting more tomorrow.
And she'll be posting more tomorrow. So, and then I thank the team because they are one of the levels of interviewing, so they've been interviewing quite a bit, so I do appreciate them. I do have a thank you, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna physically thank, we're gonna publicly thank them this month, and then next month, we're gonna formally accept a donation. This was from Mr. Green over at Shrop. Let's see, Mr. Green, Ms. Shrop's music teacher and band director, would like to personally and publicly thank Springfield Cares and four Springfield families for donating new ukuleles to our Shrop music program. Springfield Care and one Springfield family together purchased 14 ukuleles for Shrop from Taylor Band and Orchestra. Three other Springfield families purchased three more ukuleles per family for a total of 23 new ukuleles. I never said ukulele so much in my life right now, I gotta cook them more times. These ukuleles added to our 10 previous school-owned ukule- ukule- ukuleles purchased by the district in 2020. Now makes our total of 33 ukuleles. This is enough for each student to learn to play the ukulele at the same time instead of sharing or rotating of ukuleles. Again, a big thanks to these people for their donation to the Shrop music program, and we will formally put that on the agenda for next month to, to accept them. So I know, I know playing the ukulele is a, one of the highlights of Shrop's.
Can I say, I happen to be one of the people that had to carry some of the ukuleles in when they-
You just wanted to say ukulele.
I did, I say a different thing, but that's okay. But, I do, it's weird. So, but the kids face it, when I walked in with multiple boxes and they're like, oh, I mean, they, it was almost Christmas time, it was beautiful to see, so. So, so we're really excited about them, about them having that. So it's May, we have eight days left, which is unbelievably of how quickly this year has, has gone by. We've gone through a lot of changes this year, a lot of ups, a lot of downs, and we ended on a high note, so with ukuleles and passing of loveys, so it is, it is a good high note. And I just want to thank the students, the families, staff out there for another exciting year here at Springfield. And even though we have eight days left, we've already started working on next year, and we will, I mean, and we will be working all summer long to get ready for August, 'cause unfortunately, it's gonna be here before you know it. So, thank you for a wonderful school year.
I have a question.
I have an answer.
On the, I think this is a great idea, the proposal, but how does this become an actionable, I mean, what, what's the process where you're going to go through to establish it?
We'll, we'll start advertising for applications later this week, social media, newsletter, so on, and we'll accept applications, and then next month, we will filter through those and select the 10 candidates, and then we'll start meeting, we'll meet a little more frequently at first to get a good handle on where we're at, and then we'll transition to quarterly meetings after probably November, December of next, next year, once we've got a good handle there. And then plan to bring a proposal for just the capital plan as to what we, what that committee would recommend, you know, be replaced, fixed, whatnot, you know, over the next couple of years, and, you know, the quarterly meetings will allow us to update that as needs arise.
Well, you answered my second question, which was going to be, is this a do and done, or is this going to be an ongoing thing?
No, I think it's important that it becomes an ongoing.
Okay, thank you, I think it's a good.
And, and I think one of the things too that we're gonna look at for next year is getting a strategic plan created, a five-year strategic plan, and this will fall right into the strategic plan process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items worthy of our note, your note, May 26th is Memorial Day, no school, May 29th, students' last day, May 29th, end of fourth quarter and second semester, May 30th is Teachers' Records Day and their last day, May 30th is graduation at EJ Thomas, and June 17, did we change that?
Yes, okay.
You wanna announce, do we wanna announce it?
Yes, um, so for items worthy, our June-
10.
Board meeting will be June 10th for next year, next year, next month.
Next month.
And for the Memorial Day, we will be marching in the parade, so the band will be in the parade, Sparty will be in the parade, and we'll be in the parade, so it'll be, 50-plus is, this is the first time they're gonna be in the parade?
Yeah.
So, it should be-
This is in the Lake More.
Yes, yes. So, we'll come out to the parade, it's always a good time.
Number 21 is citizens' comments. Are there any comments? It does not have to be on board agenda items. Okay, seeing nothing there, then it's recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Purlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farol?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Mrs. Hammond, I'll see you.
Great job, everybody.